I'd like to call a meeting of the town council of Wausau to order, or if you would, please stand with the invitation and may standing on the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Gubin?
Our God, we thank you for the beauty of this day and the glory of your handiwork. We thank you for those things that we've been able to enjoy today that you've placed here for man. We thank you for the opportunity that is to serve. The Bible teaches us that he that would be leader of all and above all would serve all, so help us to be good service tonight to our town and our community in every deliberation and judgment for the board tonight be given due consideration and help us to make the right decisions in Christ's name, amen.
Commence. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We like to welcome all of you that have come to meet in town this evening, and we have the first thing to do is a final budget hearing and statute. We have to hold this meeting about 5:05, so we're just a couple of minutes away. If the council prefers, you can look at consent agenda and see if there's anything there that you would like to have withdrawn or like to add, and then just in a few minutes we'll adopt the consent agenda. Anybody have anything that you have a question about or would like to first discuss individually? Okay. Okay. Liberation data, fancy turnips, I get my own alternative plant. Mine's still in the sack. It will be drier than the willing to say, I don't suppose. I blew the city hall clock, which is official for our meetings, it's at 5:05. Mine is a couple of minutes behind that, so we can use the one that's on the clock that the public has access to. We will reset our city council meeting and open our budget hearing for the 2025-26 budget. Madam clerk?
And it remains the same as the other budget hearings that we've had. The budget's balanced at $5,405,726. No changes have been made since the original hearing.
Okay. Anyone on the council have a question? We have our budget figures, our income and expense figures, and then we have the departmental figures of income and expense broken down by each department. Did, one question, did we, Mr. Phillips had a suggestion, and we kind of echoed at least more support for that about taking any monies that might be left over or carried forward and making it recreational monies, or do we just want to look off this and then when we get into it, if we need that, we can create that and just...
I think we'll have to do that because they came and got the debit card for the fire gains, and I just got the receipt yesterday.
Okay.
I haven't been able to run them down and get any money that was collected, so I'm unsure what that whole budget's going to be right now.
So if we adopt this budget tonight, after we're in it for a month or six weeks or something like that, we can do a line item transfer, or we can create that budget as such and then do a transfer. We have to have a hearing, but we can do those things. Anybody have any other question or comment from the council? Anyone in the audience have a question about the budget for the coming year, which begins October the 1st? Do you have a question about the budget for the town of Wausau for the coming year? Okay. Okay, back to procedure. We close this and adopt it as a general meeting?
Right.
We don't adopt it in the hearing, that's right. Okay. All right. No one having a question? We will call, we will close the public hearing, and now we will reopen our regular city council meeting, and we've had a chance to look at consent agendas. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions that you would like to have made? If not, the chairman of the city would accept the motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion and we adopt the consent agenda.
We have a motion, there is a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion. How you doing, Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
And the chair of the house, yes. Okay. Understood, the audience seems to be none. Madam clerk?
The first thing is the adoption of the Resolution 2025-04, which is adopting the budget, it's in the back of the clerk tab, and it's Resolution 2025-04, Resolution adopting a budget for the fiscal year 2526 in the town of Wausau, Florida, and appropriating the funds for said fiscal year, whereas the town council of the town of Wausau, Florida has adopted a budget for the fiscal year 2526, whereas it is necessary that the appropriations be made for said fiscal year shown by the budget summary, which is attached and made a part of hereof, and whereas the tentative budget has been approved and advertised according to with the laws of the state of Florida and the town charter, and whereas the budget needs to be finalized after a public hearing and the town council has to pass the resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the town council of the town of Wausau, Florida. Section 1, the appropriations as shown in the budget have been adopted and hereby appropriated for use during the fiscal year 2025-2026, commencing October 1st, 2025. Section 2, all items shown as appropriation, anticipated revenues are hereby appropriated for the use during the fiscal year 2025-2026, and all of the said figures are hereby confirmed by this resolution, having been reviewed and advertised for action. Section 3, this resolution has been placed on the town Wausau's official website for public comment and notice of adoption, passed and adopted by the town of Wausau dated this 18th day of September, 2025.
Okay, you've heard the reason of the resolution to adopt the budget, that you would entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion to approve the budget.
We have a motion to approve the budget by resolutions, is there a second to the motion?
I'm second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion. How you doing, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan Bird?
Yes.
And the chair of the house, yes. Okay. Let me just ask for, was the budget, as you worked on it and brought it into focus, was it less difficult than last year?
Very much so.
Very much so. Our revenues did not increase a whole lot, but we're either doing something to our indebtedness, maybe our revenues do increase from year to year from the state, a small amount, but the last two years, our budget has been very difficult to balance, to fund, and so...
The selling of the non-potable water has made a great difference, a great difference, and just for this month, we're fixing about $11,000, just for this month.
Wow.
That's on the four lane. The trucks are coming in here regular, but...
This is how weather's happening.
So, takes a little while to get it in, but it's out there, but you did.
Okay, all right.
The next thing is the project updates, and Jonathan's here from Dewberry, you don't need to ask him any questions. On the potable water, which is the well project, we've received the notice to proceed and the notice has been sent to the contractor, and the pre-construction meeting is scheduled for 9:23, 25, that's right, right Jonathan?
Yes.
And the Second Avenue project, Second Avenue project, which is the culverts on Second Avenue, we've received that notice to proceed and we're getting ready, I think I sent that one, the notice to proceed's been sent to the contractor.
I think it's supposed to start next week, after.
Oh, they starting?
I think it's next week, I think it's the next week.
Okay, so that's on the Second Avenue drainage project. The Oide and Core Lane paving project, the plans and specs are right at 100%?
We've submitted 90s, and we've submitted 90s. I think we're waiting on DMT steel, or Ms. Lynn, maybe you could correct me, but I think we're trying to pave Fitch Circle also. So Fitch Circle is dirt, and we're paving Oide and Core where T's in the fence, we're trying to get that paved up to the most, the farthest east road, I think that's Core Lane on the far east side, and so that's the goal, and then I think we're just waiting on DMT to give us that blessing, so I'm kind of sitting, like I could finalize these plans pretty quickly if I knew the answer's no. If it's yes, I need to go get some additional survey and tile that together, my alignment, so that's kind of why we're waiting. It's not that I can't finish, I can, I just, I think we're waiting on DMT, hopefully they'll give us some additional $30,000, $40,000 to tile that in together, and that way you're not turning it on to a dirt road after you've just got off pavement, so that's the intent.
And we did have a second site visit out there by the FDOT representatives, where they're still looking at it, they're going to try to put this project in with some other projects, the names and extra funding on, see if they can push it in on that and get it paved, so it's still looking good that we'll get that paved.
Is there any timeframe and deadlines approaching?
I don't, I don't, I think you have on the city budget mid, you have until 2027, maybe like March of 2027, and don't hold me to that this year, they have a better, if it's 2027 at some point, and I've expressed that at DMT, I said, "Look, either tell us yes or tell us no, let us move on," but I mean, we're hoping the answer's yes, and so I'm not pushing or even look too hard of timeline, but you know, give me some direction and let me, let me either do this, or if the answer's no, we can move forward.
The way, if we aren't looking at the end of the year or early next year calendar drop date, I'd think we would wait and see if we can ask $40,000 and another half a quarter in paving, I'd like to see us wait and see if we got it, but not enough to jeopardize what we do.
Sure.
And that is 2027, correct?
January.
I think it's like January, so I knew it was 2027, so I mean, you've got, you've got time. I mean, if we turn this loose now, we could advertise this, and that's probably a four and a half, five month job, so I mean, you've got time to wait.
Okay.
I just, you know, I kind of just reiterate, the reason we're waiting is just waiting on DMT to either your blessing or tell us no.
Okay.
We did get the, okay, to start doing some billing on that project, so we're, we'll start reimbursing on some of that project too. The coronavirus COVID project, which is the house behind us, the variances will be presented at the planning commission meeting in September, so we're waiting on those right now to move forward, we had to apply for several variances for that project. The notices to the town residents have gone out, and signage about the project is displayed, and the community meeting is scheduled for here, October 16th. They're having some in Chipley right now, but the one for here is October 16th, so as soon as the planning commission approves our variances, we should be able to move on.
Is that submitted for the September, the October? September meeting's only a beginning.
It must be October meeting, then.
I think, I think I got a letter from the planning commission, and I think it'll be the October.
Okay, I'll change that.
Thank you.
Yes, it may have been October, October. And so that's all we're waiting on, that. The plans are ready to go, we're ready, have everything ready as soon as we can get those variances. On the Jefferson Street project, the paving has begun, we've had a small issue on First and Jefferson with the culvert interfering with the water main, have, did we find a solution?
I don't know, I've tried to call Philip today twice, I think he was going to try to meet with Cinch.
Cinch was here.
And I don't know if Philip, so I've called him twice today, maybe even three times, and he did not, wouldn't have to take my call, so I don't know, I think they did meet, but I don't know the verdict.
$3,500 to fix it.
To move that below it, it was a little steep. So what it is, there's a miter, where the toe of that miter is interjecting with the pipe that y'all have running down First, that's a water main, that's a main line, it's eight inches or six inches, and it's just, it's just hitting our toe, I mean, we've got to either go under it or go around it, and I guess Cinch gave you quote for $3,500, which seems a little steep to do that, but I know, I know the guys that own Cinch, so let me make a call tomorrow and just see if we can maybe drop that down. At the end of the day, it's got to be done, I'm not saying it hasn't been done for that price, but that water line does have to be moved, and let me see if I can maybe help facilitate that, maybe lower that some.
First location, first location?
First is Jefferson, first on Jefferson, yes, sir.
Yeah, the four way.
The four way?
At the...
Yes, yes.
Stock sign.
Yes, sir.
Not four ways, no.
No, at the stock sign, yeah.
And we knew the water line was right there, Philip showed us, hey, this is somewhere right here, we're not sure exactly how far off the road, and so we just didn't know, I mean, I, there was no way to know, and if you knew it was there, just weren't sure, A, how deep, and there's no way he could probe that and find all that out before.
But let me ask an uncomfortable thing, isn't that why we engineer the job, so that things like this are looked at?
Same, that does happen all the time, I mean, this is a common occurrence.
I know it happens all the time, but I'm still with the answer to the question.
Oh, I mean, had I had maybe Asbills, maybe we could have known that one of them was there and where it was at, and the depth.
So we don't have Asbills?
It's, I mean, yeah, if you have some of Asbills going forward, for sure.
Yeah, we have Asbills.
So we have Asbills plans, did you, did y'all were able to reference those plans?
I did not.
So will y'all be taking care of that $3,500?
No, I'll be from the city. Yes, sir.
Even though we paid y'all to engineer?
That's correct.
A little startling.
Sir?
I said, "That's a little startling."
Yeah, well, I mean, I, you know, this is, I mean, I think you can ask Ms. Lynn, I think Cinch has been out replacing several, I mean, lines, happen all the time during construction, I mean, that's just...
Well, we haven't had to pay any of the issues that Cinch has had on the Department of Transportation project.
Yeah.
They've been doing it because it was, you know, they're just somebody...
Typically, water lines and sewer lines is all the town, and DMT, I don't think DMT's paying for those, I don't know how those get paved, or whatever Cinch has done, but DMT doesn't typically get in the lot of utilities.
Have we been paying for those? When they discover a line or what?
For the four lane project?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah.
We haven't paid for anything.
Yeah.
All right, we're determined, but I know we can't solve that here tonight, but it just, I thought that's why we had an engineering firm right at the plant force, because they would tell us what actually need to be taken, foresee any issues.
Yeah, I mean, we do a design, or a Sunshine 811 design ticket, locate everything, but even when you locate a water line, you're given a variance of three feet, you're given a variance of a foot and a half on each side, I mean, there's no way to know the exact precise point of that water line, so, I mean, unless you're a city public works department, because they're probes everywhere, you don't know the depth to the exact inch, and you don't know the exact footage off the driveway or off the edge of pavement, there's no way to ever know that, I mean, that's impossible, even on Asbills, they're not going to be to the exact T, and so that's impossible, I mean, what, I think what you're, I know what you're asking, and I get, and that's, I respect the question, but that's impossible to know, just simply because of, you know, dirt, whatever, I mean, the city bringing the dirt, maybe there's a wreckman bringing more dirt, it says it's two foot off the edge of pavement, two foot deep, well, now it's two and a half feet deep, and you're, you know, just, that's a hard thing to add, I mean, again, I know what you're saying, and I get it, and it's not fun, but there's no way to be...
I'm just thinking, the large expense of, that we've been paying to get this done, that $3,500, surely somewhere in the midst of all of this overhead we're paying, somebody could take care of that, that's what I'm thinking, because it's, because, you know, we're, we're, we've been allowing the grant fund to pay a lot of money right out to, for example, to the engineering firm, I mean, they don't have the $3,500 that they can...
Did anybody at all try to locate, do it was transm...
So I asked, I asked Philip, and he said, "Well, it's like, there's no way to probe." He knew there was a water line, and I think Ms. Lynn, in the pre-con, we sat down, he said, "Hey, there's a water line in this vicinity," but there was no way that he could go out and probe, and he'd know the exact point for the whole, you know, for the whole hope job, that's just impossible. And flagging it, and you know, so flagging, you know, you'd have to, it'd be a 20-man crew all day, every day probing your water lines, that's, that's...
The water lines were marked, on the Asbills plans, this is what tells how far down there the water line goes.
Right.
He marked water lines.
Yeah, but you'll see a blue line typically on a set of drawings like this, or when you go out for construction, there'll be blue or green for sewer, and that line is a location, but even then, it's not straight below that line, I mean, you're given a three foot, and maybe Jeff, you can explain better, but you're given a three foot variance, where it may be a foot and a half to the left, or a foot and a half to the right, and given kind of a buffer.
Sure, I've never, believe me, I don't need to explain this, I understand, with the first time you said it, but from an engineering firm, y'all would also, should take into allowance variances, right? Like, you would also take into consideration variances, it wouldn't just be always, oh, well, sorry, we didn't consider the variances.
If it helps Jonathan any to jump on board with you for a second here, it's kind of like when you pull up the property appraiser site and you look at boundary lines, and we all know and accept, those are going to be exactly, the surveyor goes out there, they're going to be a little bit different than what that website shows.
Sure.
That's analogous to what these Asbills are going to show, and what Jonathan's speaking about, about that blue line and variance that you're going to give.
Right, but to follow your analogy, if I send a surveyor out there, and pay him to be the surveyor, the engineer of record, and then I send in a fence company, and the fence company says, "Oops, didn't allow for this," I'm going to go back to the surveyor and say, "No, wait a minute, you went out there and you validated that this line was at this point."
Right, you said the line is here.
Yeah.
And I understand what you're saying.
I'm just following that analogy, I know, listen, and all analogies fail at one point.
Well, I don't agree with that statement.
Well, possible, can't.
I can, I could go all day on you with analogy.
(laughing)
Actually trying to do that, but anyway, what I'm, what I'm trying to say, though, is the survey would be akin to somebody actually going out there, probing and finding out to the inch, to the foot, left, right, up, and down, exactly where it is, that's the actual analogy. I'm just talking about the Asbills, and to be fair to the engineers, they cannot know to the square inch where it's going to be, and it is a very common occurrence, I'm just giving Jonathan some support, I'm not saying right, wrong, or indifferent, but that is typically how it all typically works out, and the cities are responsible for it.
I think it's six.
Okay, all right. I know we're not going to stop it here tonight.
Jonathan will tell you, he and I have been having conversations back and forth, and I've been pulling out, like, this is $3,500 for a $700,000 project, that they have a whole lot more ways to get $3,500 than us, and he and I have had, you know, we've been going back and forth.
And I mean, Jonathan can find something over there with six, probably, and there's probably something that can be worked out to the city's benefit, is the greater point I like.
And it's kind of, maybe this could be lower, where it's not $3,500, I don't think it would be that much, and maybe once I've...
I think the materials were 12, 12 or 13, 12, 23.
Let me just kind of go back to the beginning of what, what's, are we, are we not aligned? Are we, are it's depth, because, three feet, three feet, that's a loss of, that's a, I used to survey.
It's the depth.
And when we do billings and things like that, and work for the Air Force, et cetera, et cetera, we don't have three feet or three inches, we sit and work and say, "Drive it here."
Yes, it's the depth.
So, the three feet is lateral, our problem is the depth.
Horizontal, yes, sir.
So...
It's just, I mean, it's hitting it, maybe if it was half a foot lower, it could probably go right under it, and I want a little bit more, and I don't want that pipe to sit on top of it, because of that water main, you know, turns on and all of the pressure, I don't want it rubbing on the concrete.
The problem is not lateral, it's, it's...
Horizontal.
Uh...
That's typically the problem.
Our vertical, I'm sorry.
Some creating problems are typically vertical.
Yeah, they, most of them are vertical, yes.
So then, so then, to find the pipe, I want to build a problem, if the, if the, if the line is right, get on the line, and then maybe that fork, one way or the other, you find it, so we haven't found the pipe.
No, we found the pipe.
We found the pipe.
Yeah, it's just, it's going to be in line with our miter that has the lane, and that pipe is going underneath First, and it's going to hit that water line, so that water line's got to be lowered up half a foot, foot, you know, foot, maybe 10 inches.
Do we know how deep it is?
I'm not sure. The contractor, I can ask, I haven't, I haven't asked in three notches your inspection company, and they, he didn't tell me, I mean, he said, you know, two and a half feet, maybe.
And you would know how deep it needs to be?
Cinch, the, me, I mean, if I could look at it, I could tell you, I just, I don't know the exact depth that it needs to fall, he told me not much, I mean, you're barely hitting the bottom, so eight inches, a foot, foot and a half max, which that really, and to your point, it doesn't matter whether it's got to fall six or three feet, the price is going to be the same, and you're still kind of doing the same work, like you're 40 and 45, you know, a couple 45 and a stick of pipe, and you're, you know what I'm saying, you're kind of making that U shape.
Just dig out and either jump on the pipe.
And PVC does, it does move a little bit, not that much.
Miter pipe could just bend and dip.
Yeah, and I mean, Mr. Phillips, just to piggyback off what you and I discussed, I mean, contractors hit pipes all the time because they don't know where they're at, cities can't go out there and locate, I mean, just can't, you can't, never know, and they hit them all the time, and it's because, hey, you think it's right here, when no, it was a foot to the left, and we just, you know, work slow.
Yeah, I mean, I watched for Cinch, they, they just, just about every day, they had something they needed to do. I get it, I get it.
It's part of it, I mean, it's not fun, that's probably the worst part of my job, I hate hearing a water line's in the way, but it happens.
Does anybody else in the council have a question, John, but we, and not just...
No, 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 I don't have anything, yes.
Then let me, let me close on this and then, on all of our projects, is our Asbills in the future going to be better than the Asbills that we are having to work off of now?
That would be a cinch question.
I was here when those license was done, we had a problem, a problem with cost two times ago when we set in the water, we had two pipes down here, one was maybe four inches, and maybe one was eight, or one was six, and one to 12, or something like that, and we had pipes out there that were fully charged, had water in them, running side by side each other down there, and, and, and it took, somebody breaking one of those lines and watering it out there for a week or a weekend or something, before we did, our Asbills did not show that, and it did not, our contractor at that time did not shut off that deadline, so my concern now is being, booking, having to do this again, probably must, may not be still serving, but, but somebody is.
You don't want it to continue to happen, I understand.
Somebody else have to chew that bone.
And that would be a cinch, again, I'm no part of the water line, I don't know who, A, designed the water lines, and what all Cinch is doing, or B, you know, who is that DMT, I have no idea, that would be their question, that maybe you can ask, you know, what type of, because, yes, on water, anything on the ground, typically you have a set of drawings on the back end, it's Asbills, so you can locate those lines you can't see, right, and you don't know where they're at, so you rely on those Asbills, and hopefully, whoever that inspector is, is inspecting that and marking X, Y, or Z, or, hey, this fire hydrant's going to be three foot off the edge of pavement, when now it's five feet off, you know, or whatever.
We will, we will get to those on all the DMT projects, on this project, when this is relocated, who will be in charge, given it's that Asbill corrected?
I mean, I, if you give me the set of drawings and the CAD file, I can update it, I can tell you, or maybe we can hand draw it in, so, hey, this pipe is, you know, from this location to here, it's dropped down another two feet, or whatever, I think we can hand draw that in on what you currently have.
Did we not have, did we not have, you should have plans available for this?
Yeah, they, Jonathan, they have your plans.
I mean, you don't do Asbills for road, I mean, you can see what we've done, you know, on the roadway stuff, if that's what you're asking. You're talking about on the Jefferson and Jackson?
Yeah.
Yeah, but typically you don't have Asbills, I mean, you have my drawings, and that's, you store those because that's above ground, you can see it, and so, I mean, I guess, that kind of serves us both, but your stuff underground is where you get your Asbills, drawings on the back end after project.
So you're saying you can take your drawings and our drawings and mission without...
I can do something, it may not be the perfect set of Asbills, but I mean, I can take what y'all have and make a copy, that way you don't draw over the originals, and just make a copy of that one sheet, and I can hand draw in, or if you can give me or locate me the CAD file, I don't mind dropping, dropping that in CAD and changing that, I can do that for sure.
Can we do that?
If you can locate those, those drawings.
Oh, yeah, I appreciate it, it'll be a, it'll be a good effort, no, I appreciate that.
At minimum, we can create that one sheet, make a copy, and draw it in, hand draw it, so that way whoever's in Lynn's seat going forward, her or the next clerk, can at least say, "Hey, we're three feet down here, or five feet down from..."
Okay, okay, sure.
And I'm not doing that at all.
Is that good, council, that we, that we do that, and make sure plans and all that, make sure somebody's...
Sure, sure, that's, that's easy, we can absolutely do that.
Anybody else have anything before we move to the next one? Okay, Madam clerk?
On Jackson Street, I understand Philip, the paving is pretty much completed, they've got people, got people to touch up, things to go, but this street is basically complete, and it's the same contractor, Jefferson, you remember. We haven't heard anything on the Possum Palace money, and on the Rogers Square, we've approved And on the Rogers Square, we approved the grant manager and the engineer procurement and we're waiting on the notes to proceed from Florida Commerce to be at the construction services. And I think Fred Fox is already working on the, um, environmental assessment on that one.
Have you already looked at plans with that? Is that something happening for a king?
What?
Actual plans?
There hasn't been.
That's after all this?
Yeah, the engineer will show some plans for that.
Okay. Are there any of those, are there any of these that we anticipate having to have full funding and to complete? I'm listening to the news now and it says we're flush with money now at the state, but in the next year or two, we may be payable a little bit. Um, so we need to start anything that we got to lobby or, or anything we need to start it. This phase for Possum Palace, the fans, isn't the fans that?
No, this is just the.
This is the best of Rogers.
This is, no, this is a small project. This is not the.
That's that six hundred thousand for Rogers Square.
And they're going to come back to fifty thousand dollar Possum Palace.
Yeah, that was for fencing and stuff. Um, I'm not sure.
Oh, that was in the original, the one.
Yeah, the original one.
That's not that new one, but we haven't seen anything on that.
We, I did receive today, which I didn't put it in here because I just got the amendments to move the money from one oh nine, maybe we were over to one oh six where we were under. So we did get the amendments for that and they also gave us, um, an extension just in case we run into problems. So we're good on that. Um, the next thing is just, just the budget summary. Um, the numbers look kind of wonky because I went ahead and wrote some checks, fixing quote, trying to start closing the books out, some checks that have been written. Um, and the income to date on the revenue sharing, that includes grant funds that were just passed through money and we'll try to do that a little different next year. Um, but everything else, the financial statements in here for, for all of the things. Um, that's basically all the business I had there. I put in here a copy of the consolidation ceremony. You may remember we talked about having a little ceremony when the fire department goes over to Washington County Fire Services and this is a little, um, invitation for that. We've sent it to the county commissioners, county manager, the news media, um, for just a little ceremony. You remember that Joe had mentioned the, um, let me see what it's called again. There we go. The Declaration of Unity and Service. And I put it on this pretty little paper and we're going to put a frame on it and put all the councils sign it. You'll have that for the ceremony. So, and it was exactly the wording that Joe had given at the last meeting, so.
And we anticipate that being the wall of the firehouse?
I'm going to expect it, yes, sir.
Uh, so it will be October first and at ten thirty a.m. over at the fire station.
October first. October month. Why we still miss? I said before October first, why we still like patrolling.
And then there is also the development club is planning the annual fall festival and the trunker treat down at the Possum Palace for October twenty-fifth from five to seven. I think I said last night there was twenty or twenty-two trunkers already, so we're still working on that, getting that done.
If you want to come give out candy.
Yep. If anybody wants to have a trunk, we're still for some trunkers.
Last year, I think one place said they gave away, uh, seven hundred fifty pieces, whatever, and ran out, so.
Wow.
A lot of kids come.
A lot of kids come. Yeah, we had, um, we fed, we had seventeen hundred hot dogs, I think it was, and we used all those, so we're going to plan for seventeen hundred again, uh, this year. So it was a fun time.
Putting all those children, we were trying to get a ball team together. A good time was had by.
And then the only other thing I had was the, the fire department dunk tank. Um, it, the last time someone rented it, it basically fell apart and it's going to have to have some major work done on it. I talked to Justin about it at the, the fire services coordinator about moving it over there when they take the fire department. He's not interested in it. He's like, we don't really have a way set up to rent it or anything. Um, we really don't collect enough off of it because we let churches and stuff have it for free to put a whole lot of, um, money into it. We've already had to replace the light wiring three times because people just don't know how to pull it with the lights on and that. The tart that goes over it has gone missing. Um, and then the last people that used it, Live Oak Baptist Church at the back of school thing, the round ball that you hit totally fell off. So it's rusted and it fell off. Um, probably going to need some tires at some point and at fifty dollars a thing, we don't, we're not really making money on it. Um, so the county doesn't want it. Live Oak Baptist Church did write a letter saying if we weren't interested in it, they would be interested in buying it or donating it, they would fix it up and they would let other churches and stuff use it, you know, anybody wanting to use it could use it.
I like that idea.
I told them I'd have to bring it to the council, see what y'all want to do with it.
If you get the school, the school system?
Uh, Vernon Elementary uses it quite a bit. Um, other than that, it's typically just the churches.
Uh, Ms. Carter, just, uh, if we do it to someone other than a, other government agency, we have to take a bid on it, don't we?
Or if the value is, if it's under five hundred dollars, it sounds like.
That was the question, yeah.
Yes, sir. If, if it's, you just treat it as either surplusage or just, uh, it's a nonusable item.
If we, okay, if we make it, uh, okay. I think we could transfer a letter to another government agency, but if we beat it, we had, or if we sold it to individuals, we had.
Yes, sir. If it was over that threshold. It sounds like it's not.
I would think it would be much less than that.
I'd be less if I. Yes, sir. I, I think that.
Especially the shape it's in.
Y'all would find a vote on it and make that determination and decide where it goes, or well, once you decide where it goes, come back and do it at the next meeting and it's decided and wants it.
Did they make us a mall for it?
They didn't, they didn't. I mean, they said that they would be willing to buy it. If we wanted to, you know, give it away, they would take it, they would make sure the other churches had access to it or just get that part in, right?
And that does take a tiny little liability off the city too. And it does, it serves public service, so that's a good thing.
I'm like Bill, I think it's a good idea if somebody can use a idea because it's still targeted oriented towards, uh, children and youth, whether it's church, school, clubs or scouts, whatever. Can you, is it all right if she just falls over the live oak on that and writes us back something? Do we need to determine, do we need to determine a, a minimum price or something like that or since we're not hoping to be it?
We would.
I don't hope either.
If we sell it, do we need to declare surplus?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
We can do that to that, that is for negotiating.
You would do that, declare it less than five hundred? I mean, you, I think that's an easy call based on all the many things you said wrong with tires and.
I'm making a motion that we declare the dunk tank as surplus equipment for town.
All right. We have a motion to declare the old dunk tank a surplus equipment that'll be needed by the city. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll say it.
Uh, we don't, we don't want to do anything that's all right. Get in that same motion, get in that same motion, can we say it? And, uh, charge the clerk with the disposal. If she, if she gives it away.
Absolutely.
Or negotiate.
She can determine that, uh, on her own as an administrative matters later on.
That's about that. Would you amend your motion?
I'm not going to amend my motion.
To include that in the direction.
I'll.
The motion is that we declare the dunk tank to be surplus that'll be needed by the city and instruct the clerk to do disposal this way in the interest of the city. Any discussion on the motion? I vote Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips? Yes. Chair, yes.
And that's all I have.
All right. Moving on. Okay, Mr. Carter got the rights right now to you. You got to get business for the good of the order tonight.
I don't have anything, but I sure wish the root project for it can get done.
Anyone in particular? In project in particular, you can.
Uh, the desk.
The desk one.
Okay, Mrs. Carter.
I'm good.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Phillips? Uh, no, this is, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Carter, I stepped over again.
That's all right. Um, do we have any updates from Steve on what's going on with Rec? Since he was here, nothing to talk about? I haven't seen him at all. We did, uh, Kim did fix up the form to give him that he was going to go put out somewhere. Um, and that day he asked me about making some signs, do, make the signs for the town, but I haven't seen him since.
We ate there about three weeks ago and he said he was going to start with some, uh, like yard signs or some things like that, registration, small for some small activities, but I haven't seen any of it. We were on vacation and when I came back, I still didn't see him. Would you like for me to check, be in there today or two?
We, I mean, yeah, I'll just like the.
It looks like since he came and asked us, hey, and he was a little fired up and he overran from that. Mr. Phillips?
No, I don't have anything else. Thank you, Tim.
Uh, I had, I had asked, uh, Ms. Carter if she would please check with, uh, with our contractors and come near, near to close here. And I know there's going to be some milling or something like that. Uh, I would like to see if we could, and I, I don't think they're, they're using water, so I was, I was thinking we had someone of our contractors that didn't pay for the water and we're, but if, if we had one that didn't pay for the water that they could take, uh, we would put a, we would put a price on how much we did. As I don't know, but we used to exchange water, so many tons or yards of meal. If we, and, and we tried, we started to try to do some things at the cemetery that made our dreaded roads to be better, if we could get, if we could get one of these contractors to bring some meal in there and with their own laboratory and, and lay, uh, fix our, our interior roads, those small board for, for, if we have some places where we need to prevent parking or some roads that we need or trails that we need to stop access, if they seem like taking down guard rail, they, they guard rail on something, say they're going to come down and put up some bright shining one. So you're going to have some surplus guard rail. There may be places that we could get some guard rail to go down, uh, parking in the Possum Palace or, uh, for somebody shortcutting across with their motorcycles and non-motors or something like that, we could just bury it now. If she, with the board's approval, she, she would work that for us. I, I talked to her about, about us doing that. She didn't veto it, so, uh, if the council's good with it, can we do that? If we can get some meal and asphalt and barricade and stuff like that, also spike a hedge, we might get it, we might get a gift from some of that council for a thirty-five hundred dollar tax receipt or something like that.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. All right, would you do that, please? Anybody else have anything? Anyone in the city who has not signed up to speak, which you, and the audience who has not signed up to speak, which you might.
I'm going to ask one question.
Yes.
Who's in charge of cleaning up the dish and plumbing the dog's door?
Well, that's been about, that's been about as difficult as getting them to pay the first water bill, but we are on it.
Oh, okay. It looks bad.
I have been trying and trying to find somebody with the Dollar General that would take responsibility, but nobody knows anything about anything.
I asked one of the cashiers of the local, I was in there, she said it was the city's responsibility.
Oh.
I, I didn't think she was.
It's behind the fence, it's behind the fenced area, it's behind their, on their retention pond.
That, that's on their property, right? That's their pond and it's D U P right away that, from, don't they rent that from an entity down south?
I don't, of course, the girls on there don't know anything and the, we, I've emailed the district manager who helped us finally get the water bill paid. It was way late, but she has not responded, so I don't know if she has since left.
They may have a situation where they're leasing it from a captive land-owning landlord and they've got a, they, they don't have a maintenance obligation to the store. It may be a little, I don't know that, I'm speculating, but it could be part of the problem.
They have a law care that's coming out cutting the grass. I've been trying to look for them to find out and I asked one of the girls, would you find out what the name of it is next time you come? I'll see if I can run him down.
See if he's paid his bill.
That's right, see if he's paid, that's what I was thinking. But we are trying, I, I started before fund day trying to find somebody who at Dollar General would be in charge of that.
We were trying to hand these them in, we still are, we're in the city of Bluntstown for, to bring the prison in for utilities. Long story, but we had a hard time tracking down and they were renting that Dollar General from a separate landowner. Didn't think they were Dollar General, that was kind of surprising to me. So I, I assume they do that as a practice, I don't know that for sure, but if that's helpful.
But maybe our next step, we get our attorney to write a letter saying we are one of the force attorneys over to come and force them.
Well, that, we could do that and also I'd like to get in touch with city, uh, city manager Tracy Hall in Bluntstown and see if maybe she has some insight, ask who that landowner, and maybe they own multiple properties up here. Maybe it's a regional thing for that company or something.
Yeah.[1602.37]